I want to make sure that the council has an opportunity to ask any questions, really try to understand what the project is, but I don't want you to feel like anything you say is locking in your position on a future vote. This is very, very high level. This is an opportunity to ask questions, but the devil is in the details, as you all know, and this project, or any project for that matter, when it comes back will be fully vetted by staff and then by council for review. Okay? Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Mayor, city administrator, and council members. As you pointed out, this is a very preliminary review for you to take a look at and get some -- I have an opportunity to discuss with a developer, an opportunity to redevelop a very prominent site in the city of Gilroy. This site, as you know, was included in the recent economic study that was presented to you and is going to be presented to you again tonight as a potential good opportunity site for redevelopment. It's also within a potential expanded downtown station area plan boundary. So when the developer approached us with some ideas of developing the site, we were very interested and very supportive of them trying to get some highest and best uses at this location with a very nicely designed project. The applicant is willing to pursue something along those ends, but was really interested in getting a sense of if they're moving in the right direction from a policy standpoint. So we felt agreed that having some sort of workshop study session would be a good idea. So that's why we're here tonight. And so with that, I don't have -- there's no detailed analysis at this time. It is very high level and very preliminary. Again, it is an opportunity for an informal discussion with the developer. So Evergreen is here tonight to give you a brief overview of their project and answer any questions you have. And that would essentially conclude my introduction, and of course, I'm here if there are follow-up questions for staff.
Great. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Rod Collins with Evergreen Development and just wanted to thank everybody for allowing us to come in and talk to you about what we're proposing here. Just real quickly about Evergreen, we're a company that's been around for about 45 years. We are primarily a retail developer, but we also do multifamily. We have offices in four different states, in California, Arizona, Colorado, and Utah. We, like I say, primarily retail. We've probably done over 500 projects or so. We have six active projects right now in Northern California, the closest one being a 20-acre site up the freeway in Morgan Hill that we're doing that I'll reference later. And Craig, how do I just scroll between things? Is that a click through or just hit the ...? Okay. Okay. Perfect. So we've been working with the ownership on this project, in fact, let me get to that, for about six to nine months. And we were brought into the project because we have a relationship with a number of the tenants that had interest in the projects over the years. And this interest, I think, has been kind of solid for about two years, but they -- some different developers took a run at the project, and based on preliminary conversations with the city, we're looking into the costs, they've kind of shied away. So we got a call about the project, again, because like I said, we have some relationships with some of the tenants that were interested in trying to make a go of it. And we've been working very closely with Craig and with staff to look at what the demand is of the project and then make some tweaks according to what they wanted. But the big thing, as Craig mentioned here, is that we're trying to get a sense of, is the road we're traveling down something that's attractive to council or not? So in working with staff, one of the big things that came out of our discussions is wanting to see a hotel component. So with our brokerage group, we went out and kind of did more of an exhaustive reach out to the tenants. We did land a hotel, which I'll show in a second. And, you know, we pursued other uses too, like office, fitness, senior assisted living, but none of that really panned out. So what we have here, and I can say this is -- let me back up. This is the preliminary site plan that we came up with. The feedback that we got from staff on this plan was, one, again, gosh, could you put a hotel here? Number two, we'd like to see more connectivity, if you want to call it that, to the corner. We'd like to see more of an urban edge. We'd like to see some walkability that kind of tied into the rest of downtown, and it's a little more car-centric than we'd like to see. So what we did is we listened to staff, we worked with Craig, and we came up and modified the site plan to incorporate some different things in this site plan that you see. We took the gas station, which is still on the hard corner, but we took the convenience store and we put it up to the street to give more of that urban edge. You can see the walk paths coming in from the corner and then off of 10th Street. The pink areas, you see the stamped concrete. We tried to put some plaza areas in there, and importantly, we added the hotel, and we actually do have an offer in from a hotel right now. And in fact, I just met with that gentleman earlier today, and he confirmed, you know, that he's waiting to see if he, you know, can move forward on this site. The other components of the site plan, as you can see, there are two retail shop buildings, one up on 10th Street, one just to the east, kind of in the off-ramp there. Both have drive-throughs. The other building along the off-ramp is a fast food, most likely, drive-through. And then I think we show a express car wash back there. Now, I'm going to go back to the previous plan, so you can kind of see the difference there, a little more generic. This one also, at the very top corner of the project, shows a tire store. Well, as you're all probably aware, there's an existing tire store that is there. You've got the fire station on the hard corner of Chestnut and 9th, and then the tire store. And I can tell you that if there was a way to, with the fire station, make that available, we would love to incorporate that into what we're doing. We had a really good meeting with Alan Anderson regarding this, I would say, six months ago, and he kind of laid out some of the issues with the station and the expense to relocate it. But if there was a way or any plans to relocate that, I can tell you that we would love to figure out a way to incorporate that in what we're doing, as well as the tire store. And we would put in probably a brand-new tire store that, I would just tell you, it's Les Schwab tires, which is a great community neighbor, and they, on average, will do about $3 million in sales, which is a pretty nice little tax chunk of revenue. But this is kind of the scope of what we're doing. Some of the challenges that we've had in the development, let me get back to this thing here. First, I just mentioned the fire station. One of the things that we found out is that they're really not a great neighbor because of what's going on there at different hours on the weekends, at nights, early morning, and putting a hotel next to it is not ideal. And it also, as you see, takes a big chunk out of the project. So like I said, if there's something we could figure out to incorporate that fire station, we would be all ears.
So, excuse me, have you approached the private property, the existing tire shop there?
We have not. We are prepared to approach them. I think they've been approached in the past, and I know that the broker for the owner of the property has spoken with that owner on a number of different occasions. And I think that the impression I get is that the property is probably for sale at a particular price. But we hadn't approached them just because we had been getting some mixed signals from planning staff that this was the right direction to go, and which I think was the impetus to getting the meeting tonight, was to see if we are traveling down the right path and you're supportive of what we're doing, that would be the next step, would be to talk to the tire store?
Yeah.
To try to incorporate that, because we hadn't -- haven't ...
Yeah. From my perspective, I think if you had a blank canvas, right, and you had the fire station, the tire shop, you know, what would that whole area look like? And potentially, does that change the tenants that you might be putting in there?
Well, I think that the demand -- we've done a pretty extensive marketing campaign to a lot of different tenants, and this reflects right now kind of the interest that we have. And we could, if you guys said, yeah, go ahead with this plan, we're on board, we probably have users to fill every single spot in there right now. If we were going to expand it, we would have to look at maybe some alternative uses. Maybe there's a second hotel that might go in there, I don't know. But to date, it seemed as if the fire station wasn't really going to be a possibility because of the cost to relocate it. But again, if that's something that is a realistic possibility, then we'll have to put our heads together as a marketing team and figure out the best way to absorb that other space.
Well, I think that's a good problem for you guys to have, is to figure out.
Oh, no. Yeah, we would like it, but I just know that when we were told what it would cost to relocate the fire station, it was just a non-starter.
Okay.
And because one of the other things, it's just in overall economics, one of the fortunate things for the existing property owners, they have quite a bit of income coming in on the property. And so they're not in a desperate need to sell in any way, but I think they're very willing sellers if they get their price.
Right.
But because of the existing income that's on there, it is, you know, it's a pretty good price to pay per square foot to take it down. And then when you combine that with the off-site improvements that are going to be needed on this property, because you've already got an impacted intersection right now, you know, it becomes a big nut to crack, and so that's what we're trying to figure out from an economic standpoint. We've got all the interest from these tenants, and if council is in favor of the direction we're going, we can take it to the next step. But one of the big next steps we have is that we have to do a traffic study. And we've been told that that traffic study is probably $90,000 to do. Well, that's a big, you know, expense to get to the point to even see if you have a project.
Right.
Because right now, the costs of this thing are pretty high, and we don't know that it pencils. But, you know, we're willing to take the next step if council, again, feels like we're headed in the right direction.
Okay.
And so I think what we're here is to hear, you know, what your thoughts are, are there any changes that we can make, et cetera, to improve that. And I wanted also to show, though, real quickly, some of the elevations and renderings that we're doing. This is what we're doing up in Morgan Hill, is kind of the elevations that we're using here. I think there's one more slide here, which is, this is just a point of view of something we're doing up in Morgan Hill, but gives an idea of just the community feel, the plaza, et cetera. And we're willing to incorporate a lot of this stuff if this is the type of look that you're, you know, would want into what we're doing here, you know, in Gilroy. And we think there's all kinds of potential here. We're really excited to do it. We think we have some really good users, but, you know, it's going to be a very expensive project. And so we're looking for direction from council to say, okay, are we traveling down the right path? What in here do you like? What is it you don't like? What can we improve, et cetera, to see if we can take the next step, to see if we have a viable project eventually.
Right. Okay. So there's a couple -- I have some more follow-up questions. I want to push back a little bit more. But I also have two council members that want to speak. Were you done with your presentation?
Yeah. I mean, for the most part, I was just going to say that, you know, from, you know, obviously there's a lot of benefits to a project like this. You've got the hotel with the TOT tax, you've got a gas station with the revenue it's producing there, and everybody else. The tire store, if we do get that in there, you'd be cleaning up the old tire store, putting in a $3 million, you know, taxpayer there, jobs, et cetera. I mean, you can tell that it's a vast improvement over what is there currently.
Right.
But no, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. First, Councilmember Tucker.
Thank you. So have you spoken to the existing tenants? Are they, some of them, what you would be considered in your new tenant, or no?
No. All the tenants in here are, would be new tenants. There are existing tenants, I think, on the hard corner that are on shorter-term leases, and we have not spoken to them, but we would be speaking to them potentially about some of the shop space in there. But no, we haven't done that, because again, we're right now in the feasibility period, trying to figure out, is there something financially that could work at the project? But there, you know, I don't know if any of them want to stay, but we would certainly talk to them about staying.
Okay. I mean, just my, you know, O'Henry's is well-known in the community. Everybody knows O'Henry's Donuts. You're going to have some pushback there, but there was another question. Oh, the other question was, so why a car wash? I mean, even in your layout, a car wash facing a residential neighborhood doesn't make sense to me.
Well, we've had quite a bit of demand for a car wash, and again, what this reflected more than anything was the demand that we have right now. And when you're looking at a rather expensive site to develop, you need tenants that can afford to pay there, pay the rents and be there. And a car wash right now, express car washes are a very rapidly expanding segment. And so there's actually been, of all the uses in there, that's probably the one that's gotten the most interest, actually. I think we have three or four different users that all want to be there. And it was, just based on the other tenants that we had, it was the spot that seemed to fit. They would love to be right up on the street, on 10th Street, or, but, you know, facing the freeway and the off-ramp seemed to work for them. But no, it's a good question, but that's just a very ...
So that's the only place you, when you're doing your layout, that you thought it would fit? It wouldn't fit in any of the other spots?
We're open to moving it around, and that's, you know, part of the feedback that we'd like to get from everybody here, that if you say, well, we don't mind the car wash, but we'd like to see them in another spot, you know, we're happy to try to ...
Or if we decided to move the fire station, you'd put it there, or something like that?
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of different things that we could do. And I would say that too, with the fire station and the old tire store, you know, we would certainly be looking to put a new tire store in there. The hotel might look to go a little bigger, too, take down more land than what we reflected there, so that's a possibility. So just in the existing uses, we might be able to fill that up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Tobar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions, sort of in regards to the idea of sort of relocating the fire station. I actually like that idea. I mean, obviously, I know this is sort of the beginning of this conversation, but I mean, I don't know, maybe the city manager, when we look at what the cost of that would be compared to what we could potentially put in place there to generate revenue for the city, obviously. But obviously, we would have to relocate, find somewhere to move that fire station, so I think it would be good for us to have that conversation.
Well, like I said, we're open to that. I know in speaking to Alan Anderson, he had mentioned that if you're going to stay there, it needed money to be invested to improve it versus relocating it. So, yeah, from that standpoint, if you have other land that you can go, we would love that challenge of trying to figure out what we put there that would be an attractive use that would, you'd say, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm thinking that way, because again, of the upgrades that that fire station needs, and if we were to relocate it, I mean, I couldn't kill two birds with one stone there, you know. But the other thing, too, I'm looking at sort of the revenue, the, you know, potential revenue for the city, you know, and sort of going back to, you know, some of the projects that you talked about possibly having there. I think we have an opportunity, if this were to move forward, that we have an opportunity to really beautify that area there, you know. And I'm not in favor of more fast-food places, you know. I think more upscale-type, you know, businesses there would benefit the city as well. But the other thing, too, is going back to like many of the other projects that we've talked about, we have in place, make sure it's a walkable, you know, bicycle-friendly sort of project, because that's going to be very, very important, because again, it's, you know, we're really close to downtown. But finally, also for me, it's making sure that the project is a beautiful project. And not to say that you don't do beautiful work, I'm not saying that at all. I just want to make sure it's not some cookie-cutter-type project where, instead of beautifying the city, it just looks like an eyesore, you know. And I think, because I think a lot of us will want to see those type of projects come to Gilroy more. So I mean, I ask that we keep that in mind as well. I mean, I know that's way down the road, but for me, making sure that whatever project we decide, make sure we got the right type of businesses and the beautification of that, and also that it's going to be walkable and ridable for folks.
Yeah. And one thing I wanted to add is that I did read the report that the, I think you're going to talk about in later tonight, and I know that one of the things that the report said was the importance of having food establishments around a hotel. And a lot of the interest that we've had in those pad buildings is from food users. We call them QSRs, quick-serve retail. You know, a couple of the drive-throughs, you know, one probably is a coffee shop, you know, not to, you know, to be quite honest, you'd probably see a well-known coffee shop on the end of one of them, but, you know, Smash Burger-type thing and food uses like that, where we could actually create some patio areas, et cetera. You know, having that internal walkability to the hotel and the connectivity to the hotel, and similarly to the corner and to the street. Now, I mean, honestly, I don't think that 10th Street gets a lot of people walking in front right there, but certainly to the corner, trying to connect it to the rest of downtown to the corner. We're open to any suggestions there, and we've tried to reflect some ideas on this site plan. But, you know, we, to your point, we don't want to do a cookie-cutter project either.
Right.
You know, we want to do something that everybody can be proud of and say, hey, remember what was there? And look what's there, you know.
Yeah. And that's why I bring that up, because I think we have a great opportunity here. One last question regarding sort of the interest that you've received in that area specifically. You know, one of the things I know a lot of residents are hopeful for is a sort of like an upscale-type grocery, sort of like a Trader Joe's or something like that. Has that even been talked about, or any interest in ...
We have not had any traction in that type of a use. We've gone out and talked to some specialty grocers. You know, I had heard at one time, I think, that Safeway had maybe looked at this deal. You know, and Mike, yeah, Mike is nodding, and he's been affiliated with the project for many times. But that's something that we could, we could still go out to. I know that at one time, I had conversations with Smart and Final, where they were looking to relocate, they're in a smaller unit that is not ideal for them. So there might be a possibility, especially if we can get the fire station as part of the project, where we could create that, and that certainly changes the dynamics of the center, and that would be wonderful, you know, if we could get a Sprouts, a Smart and Final-type thing in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Leroy Menos.
Mr. Collins, I have some questions, and they may, you may not, at this stage of the project, have hard and fast answers, so to the extent you're able to answer, I'd appreciate it. In terms of the hotel that's under consideration, have you given some thought as to the number of rooms that would be there?
You know, I think typically for the hotels that size, there's going to be about 120 rooms. It's the same operator that we have an offer in from here is doing a hotel with us in Morgan Hill, and that's where I just came from and met with him. I know he's planning up there 120 rooms, and I think it would probably be something fairly similar.
Okay. So 120, and with regard to the type of hotels, there's a whole range. I mean, you've got everything from a, you know, Motel 6 all the way to a, you know, Hyatt Regency. Where are we talking that this kind of hotel would fall on that spectrum?
Originally, he was, and I haven't talked to him specifically about this recently, but at one time, like he was mentioning Holiday Inn Express was the flag that he was thinking about. But, you know, I think part of it depends on his market study and what else we're able to do within the center.
With regard to that market study, was any thought given as to where the visitors to the hotel would be coming from and then where they would be going during their stay here?
At this point, I don't know, I don't think he's done a market study yet. You know, candidly, we put him on hold several months back when we just weren't sure that, you know, if the direction that we were going was going to be acceptable to council. I think that there were definitely some concerns that we worked through with the planning staff, but candidly, we've been on hold for a couple of months now.
Okay. And again, without holding it any specific numbers here, you referenced the TOT. When we look at a project of this size, again, with about 120 rooms, do you have any estimates as to what kind of TOT revenue could be generated for the city?
I don't. I can get back to you, though, through maybe Craig and, you know, with an estimate from the hotel operator.
I think that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Council, anybody else?
So my question was exactly what was just asked regarding the type of hotel. I think you have a lot of potential here in this corner, and I understand that there's been some starts and stops in the process. I think this is useful for the council to hear this thing for the first time and really try to understand what it is. I am also concerned, though, about, you know, having a car wash there. I'm not sure if, with the potential of that particular site, I want to maximize the uses there and give something that the public could really be proud of, Gilroy could really be proud of. If the city were to proceed with, well, I guess, if you guys were to proceed, at some point, you guys are going to have to do an environmental impact report. You had already talked about a traffic analysis. Do you anticipate maybe doing an EIR that would cover the entire site, including the existing tire shop and the fire station?
Yeah, we would coordinate that with Craig, but I imagine that, yeah.
Because you could always shrink the EIR down, but once you do the EIR, you won't be able to expand it. So at some point, you're going to need some sort of direction from the city as to whether or not we want to proceed with the fire station.
True. And I think part of it, too, from our standpoint, is going to be, if we did incorporate it, what are those extra uses, as we talked about, that we could get in there? And could we afford to incorporate the fire station?
Okay. Okay. So you then would be working with our city administrator to kind of figure out what those next steps might be so that you guys could start moving as soon as possible? Because again, you've got a lot of analysis that you have to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But, you know, I think it's something that you guys can talk, and if the fire station is something that realistically could be moved, what's the timing of that move? And then, you know, we could sit down and talk further and try to, you know, figure that out, and maybe it has to be done in a phased development.
Right.
Where maybe the tire store possibly is incorporated into phase one, but the fire station becomes phase two based on the timing of finding a location.
Yeah. I'm concerned, though, that if we were to move forward with the fire station, that you would be stuck with that island there of the existing tire store and tire shop.
Well, right. What I'm thinking is that if we get positive feedback from you and together we think that there's a path to the finish line, we would engage that tire store almost immediately and see if we can't incorporate that today.
Yeah. Exactly. That's what I'm getting at, is incorporating everything, because you would have a blank canvas at that point.
Yeah. And my hope would be that if we would take down the tire store and then figure out the fire station, the timing of that, and the fire station could be phase two.
Right. As long as everything was laid out, you would know when things are going in. Okay. Good enough. Okay. I'm really looking forward to, you know, a quality project, as you've heard Councilmember Tobar talk about. I think Councilmember Leroy Menos was also talking about that. This is an important area as far as our entranceway, and this is the first opportunity for this council to really put something really nice at that corner. So thank you.
Well, just so I leave with very clear direction, what I'm hearing is that what we're proposing is a good start, that there are concerns over the car wash, either, one, being on the property, or, two, where it's located, I guess, but otherwise, where it sounds like it's otherwise a thumbs up on, is there any other concerns?
Well, we haven't heard from everybody, but are you going to have a public hearing first?
Yes, we're going to have ...
Maybe after public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Great.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you done? Yes. Okay.
I'm done. So thank you.
All right. Shawna, do you have any yellow cards?
I do. Ron Kirkish, followed by Jan Sargen.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Many years ago, when Dale Foster was our chief, I was working with him on a city issue, and we had a few meetings in his office, because that's where the chief's office resides, is at that station. And on the first meeting we had, he took me for a tour of the site, and he basically was saying, Ron, this is old technology. We need, this is not something, we need to have a new station, we need ... We need, this is not something, we need to have a new station, we need upgrades, we need, actually was, he says, we need new fire engines and stuff like that at the time. It's been a while. But in any case, he, he, he asked for me to consider, uh, speaking out for, for him if that issue ever came up. Well, he's gone now, but I'm going to speak out for him anyway. And, uh, I think that, uh, we need to look at that station. Does it really fit, uh, the needs that we need today? Uh, the, the, the sleeping quarters or things like that? What is it deficient? How much would it cost to make it, uh, upgrade it to that? Would it be more cost effective to actually put it someplace else? And, uh, so I'm with you guys. Uh, I think that would be something that we should consider is relocating it or something like that. Of course, obviously, it's cost, but again, this has been a problem that's been noted many, many years ago now, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for being here. Jan?
I'm a, I'm a neighbor of this proposed project, so, um, live over, um, on Maple near, right off 7th and, uh, you know, there's no, um, no denying that that is, uh, you know, we could, we could do a lot to make that corner look a lot better. Um, I do want to point out though that my neighborhood is, is people, a lot of them don't have cars and walk to stores and 10th and Chestnut is our local shopping area with local, locally owned businesses, locally owned small businesses. So as we renovate and make it look better, how do we keep the neighborhood serving businesses that are there? You know, we have, we have our little super tagareya and we've got the market and we've got, you know, there's the nail salon, I mean, just this stuff that serves the neighborhood is in that thing and, um, of course, O'Henry's, which serves not just the neighborhood, but, you know, the whole city. So, you know, how do we make it, how do we make sure that there's a way and we're helping the, the existing small businesses stay there and not just, just placing them with, with big chains? So that is my, my perspective from, you know, it's one of the things that makes old Gilroy kind of, you know, nice is that it's a walking and biking community already. If you, you know, if you watch Chestnut Street, you'll see people walk to go shopping over there. Then, um, the fire station, I'm hoping that we're not moving it real far. I mean, it's going to, you know, that we don't lose our fire station on the east side because we, uh, have a high population, growing population. Again, definitely need the fire station, but, um, so, you know, that's it. Had to bring in the new and, uh, still respect, uh, what's already there. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Robert Weaver.
My name is Bob Weaver, live on Gage Court. One of the things that struck me about this proposal was the opportunity to relocate the fire station. I realize it would probably be an unbudgeted and unscheduled expense, but the opportunity presents itself. If the finances are agreeable to the city, it might be wise to look at relocating the fire station, taking in mind the city's growth direction and traffic patterns, there may be better places to put it. I've been inside the fire station, it's served the city well for a long time, it appears. Also, um, the fire station could be used as a bargaining chip to get the kind of businesses on the rest of the development that the city might want to have. So give those some thoughts. I think this is an opportunity that we might explore, um, if it's agreeable and the finances are, are sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Shawna, anybody else? Okay, uh, last call, anybody for this item? Anybody else want to speak on it? Okay, back to council for discussion. Please queue up.
I don't have a program.
Okay, go ahead.
I can wait.
No, go, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, Bob, I, I missed really what you said because I was busy with this. So that's, it's okay. I, I know it was about the fire station and relocating it. But what I wanted to, yay, it's kind of coming up. Um, I, I hadn't said anything yet, so personally, I like the renderings, the look of what you're doing in Morgan Hill. There you are, of what, of what you're doing, the pictures that you showed, at least the, the, the last one, um, I wish I could reference it. Yeah, the one on the top there, to me is a very nice looking and I would love to see it pedestrian friendly. If cost-wise, it would work to move the fire station, obviously that would be a great thing, cost-wise and still have, um, the services necessary for those who, who live near that station. Um, yeah, my dad caught me cutting third period in high school at O'Henry's, so I won't be sorry to see that go if it has to go. Little history there. Um, but no, I just wanted to say that I, I think the design as presented here is nice. Um, I mean, a car wash is a car wash. My personal preference would be that if it's there, that it be moved away from the residential. But otherwise, I'm looking forward to this because you can do nothing but improve that area. It's, it's, it's not a beautiful sight as it is, so it'd be, it'd be great. I can see why a hotel would be advantageous to us, whatever one you can get. I, um, food, grocery would be great too, but I, I've got a lot of years knowing what it's like with Trader Joe's and Whole Foods and what the kind of, of, uh, population that they need, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not so confident you'll be able to get that one, but as far as I'm concerned, uh, I would say you're on the right path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barco.
Just to clarify, there is no, uh, residential around the site. There's a heavy equipment dealer across the street and a mini storage, so there's no houses around it, so we don't have to worry about that. Um, I, I think we're moving in the right direction, um, with this project. It's been a long time that a lot of things have said they wanted to go into that corner. Um, it would be nice to see the whole site developed since we know our, um, firehouse needs major work and we also know that a study's going to show that we need to move our firehouses around the city because they're not serving them optimally. So I, I, I would, uh, like our city manager to move forward with, you know, talking to you and, uh, see if we can, uh, make that happen with our firehouse and the tire shop to get a, a completely new corner there and to, um, work on, on 10th Street because we're going to need probably about sidewalk length or whatever we're going to need there for the widening of that, for the auto mall parkway. So I see, uh, that there's a lot of good that can come out of this, um, with the intersection, with the firehouse. Uh, I think there's a lot of pluses for the city, so I'd like to see it move forward and be a top priority for this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you. I, I'm not going to, um, reiterate anything I said again, but I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this project. I'm just sort of looking at the agenda, says next steps, the applicant will decide if they want to pursue the project. I hope that you do decide to sort of move forward on this. And going back to sort of my initial, um, comments about the, the beautification of that project, I mean, because it's, uh, 152, so, you know, people outside of Gilroy, that's what can be one of the first things that they see when they're coming into Gilroy and outside, going, leaving Gilroy. And I think having a beautiful project there, not only going to enhance sort of the neighborhood, but the image of our, of our town, so I ask that you take everything in consideration that we've talked about when you're coming up with the concept of what it's going to eventually look like, because I think we do have a great opportunity here. I'm in favor of this. Again, you know, I'm also, like I said earlier, I mean, I want to make sure that we, um, cater to the neighborhood, you know, it was mentioned earlier, obviously, people walk, I mean, I live a few blocks from there now and, um, it's somewhere that I go and, um, seeing people walking, bike, biking in that area, something that we got to make sure we maintain as well. And, um, you know, again, I look at those smaller businesses that are there, a new beautiful project is only going to enhance their businesses, you know, so I think for me, this is an important project, especially for that side of town that is way, way overdue. So I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward also to having a discussion about sort of if we were to relocate the fire station, obviously somewhere close by, you know, what that would look like as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Tucker.
Yes, I, I agree with what's already previous been said, although I didn't realize that that wasn't, um, a neighborhood right across from the car wash. I, sorry, I, um, so in that regards, then I don't mind. If it's just a high equipment, um, business across the way, then there's nobody living there, um, that will be disturbed. I was more concerned about residents being disturbed. I do agree with, um, previous council member about relocating the, uh, fire station. We have to have that discussion anyways, it's on our budget review, uh, of upgrading that fire station or doing whatever we need to do and it will be something we have to weigh out to say if it's going to cost, you know, I don't know how much, just say $5 million to update it and then it's only going to cost $8 million to relocate it. I mean, so, something has to be decided and, um, we need those upgrades either way. We're going to have to spend the money on that fire station, so relocating it and keeping it to the services on the east side of town is what I'd be interested in. Um, that's a discussion we have to have, not exactly for you, but if you were to plan out that corner, I would expect that that whole, to put, uh, complete all the sidewalks. I, I mean, I'm just assuming that there would be sidewalks all the way down because if I remember correctly, there's not, right? There's, there's dirt or it might be on the opposite side, I, I can't remember. Yeah, there's no sidewalks, yeah. It's crazy. Um, so, um, generally speaking, I'm, I'm completely, uh, supportive and hope, um, some questions that I would have of staff, um, to what we can do to, um, I don't, this is directed at staff. I don't, um, I don't know what the process is, but I don't want to have any unnecessary, um, obstacles of, for, that might come in. I, for example, I don't know this, I, I'm just talking at the top of my head, but just for example, I don't see why we would need to have a CUP or why we would have to have other things and if we do, then I would like an explanation as to why. So some of those policies that maybe we, who are in control of policymaking, would be the ones to review and see if those things are needed, so we're not, um, making an obstacle to, um, someone who's coming in and trying to redevelop the whole area, which would be a big improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leroy Menos.
Mr. Collins, from, from what I see so far, I, I think I share a lot of the same thoughts of my other colleagues in that I, I think that this is, you're off to a good start. Um, one thing that I would still like to see a little more information about is with regard to the car wash, are there alternative uses for that function there? Does it have to be a car wash? And the reason I say that is because, you know, when you have a commercial building, a commercial building can be a lot of different things. It can be a, a restaurant or it could be a shop or, or whatever, it can be a lot of different things. Car wash can only be a car wash, um, and that can only be used for certain times of the day, so its usage is significantly more, uh, limited than the other kinds of commercial properties. So I'd, I'd be curious to see if there are alternatives. Now that said, if this were to remain, I don't know that that would be a complete bar on my part to supporting the project, but I'd, I'd be curious to see if there are other alternatives we can at least consider for it. Um, with that said, I, I think also one theme and one thread that you've heard throughout almost all of the comments today really is about quality and that's the one thing, if I could impress upon you just one thing, is really just quality and high quality in particular. Um, as Councilmember Tovar said, uh, before me, this is, I mean, Utah gateway to the city, this is right off the highway. I mean, this is the first thing people are going to see when they come right off of, uh, off of 101. And, and so I, I think really a lot of attention has to be paid to the aesthetics of this. Certainly, we don't want to cut corners there. I think also in terms of, of what Jan mentioned earlier about keeping this, uh, walkable for that surrounding community, looking at the human scale of the project. Because if you look across the street at some of the other buildings, I mean, or the other commercial properties, I've tried walking between, you know, the Burlington Coat Factory, for example, and the Smart and Final, I mean, that's, you need a Sherpa for, a Sherpa for that guide, uh, you know, to guide your way there. It's a long trip. Uh, so keeping it, you know, to a human scale, I think, would be very, very important. And, and an emphasis too, I see it already here on outdoor space with the different patios, but, but keeping that in mind as well, because I think that also ties in with the aesthetic and keeping it to a human scale and encouraging people to walk and to bike to that area.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Marx.
I have to echo what all the other council members have said. This project looks very, very good. Um, I have a question for you. Would you consider keeping some of the small businesses, you know, putting them in the newer buildings, so the buildings are all upgraded and the style is there and the quality? But like the neighbor had said, like the nail salon, O'Henry's Donuts, would you ask them if they would want to relocate into your new businesses?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, feedback like that is important. Um, you know, one of the, the tough things for tenants coming into a new project like this is just that the, uh, the rents on the newer projects tend to be a lot higher because of the construction costs and so.
Right.
A lot of the times, the local tenants will not be able to afford those rents and so they might go to an adjacent center, they'll hopefully stay in the neighborhood, but I'd love to get the feedback from the neighborhood, from council, uh, and there's always a couple tenants, you'd say, like, you know, we really want the bar still there, you know? You know, that's, or, or whatever it might be. So at the nail salon, we, we're happy to talk to them, but sometimes it's difficult from an economic standpoint because the numbers we need for a rent standpoint may not, um, match up with what they can afford to pay.
Sure, that's understandable. I really want to emphasize, stay away from the fast food restaurants. Let's bring quality restaurants in that we can travel to, be proud of.
Yeah, and I think that, that, um, we do show the one, I call it a fast feeder, uh, that's on there and, and the hope there is that we would get something that is a little more unique. Um, one of the tenants, you know, that I know that has expressed interest in being there is Foster's Freeze. They have the old unit, I think, downtown and so they're now want to put a brand new unit and really upgrade what they have. They've got a really kind of, you know, interesting looking building, so I mean, we want to do something a little different with that. We don't want to put, you know, well, I want to be careful of what I say, but, uh, you know, we don't want to put your standard fast, if, if it's going to be a, a, a restaurant with a drive-through, we want it to be a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Unique or something that's not yet in the city, some of that effect.
I understand that, and I don't know if this is true or not, but someone told me that Akki might not be moving to Morgan Hill. That might be a nice restaurant to try and get down here.
I just was with the head of economic development and she was, we were talking about where she's hoping that Akki goes.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, no, if they didn't go there, they would.
That would be a good traction. One last question and maybe, maybe the council can help, um, can answer this for me. Who puts in the sidewalks? Because I always thought that was just commonplace to go along with the development and then the senior housing came in south of town with no sidewalks. So who, who puts those in? Is it the city or is it the developer and is it written into the agreement?
So, Gabe, you want to answer that?
Certainly, Mayor and Council, so, uh, any off-site improvements or onsite improvements that are part of the project is on the applicant. So, for example, the, uh, senior project you mentioned, the requirement was for them to construct sidewalks just on their front edge. So if the entire project site around it requires it, then that'll be mandated. Now, we can always through a development agreement negotiate other off-site improvements that would be paid by the developer, but if it's, uh, project related, it's paid by the applicant.
We, I was going to say, we would typically install all those improvements when we're doing the entire development, whatever the city deems is necessary or required.
Well, good. I mean, this sounds exciting.
Councilmember, anything else? Is that it? Carol? Is that it? Okay, um, I, I, I'm not ready to give up yet on, um, I would hope that you would continue conversations with your people and try to see about the possibility of a Sprouts, uh, Trader Joe's, of a, of a Whole Foods. And if for some reason you can't attract those specialty type of shops, um, please let us know so that when we get bombarded by our citizens as to why there isn't one, we have a good answer for them.
Yeah, now that, and that's, that's very fair and, and that's a good comment and, uh, we'll make sure that when we do reach out to them, that we get their feedback and so if it is negative, we'll try to find out specifically what it is.
Right.
Why they're saying no.
And then, um, I, I want you to know that I am supportive of this project. I really, really am. And as I said before, um, I would love to. And as I said before, I would love to be able to give you a blank canvas there, so that you could really look at, at everything, that entire area, and potentially lay things out, maybe you would lay things out a little bit differently, you know, if you had everything. But you might also, you know, potentially look at different types of businesses that might go there, if you had, you know, a blank canvas, as I said. But I'm also looking for quality, and so, a hotel is not a hotel is not a hotel. I want, I, I would, I would really like to see a quality hotel there. Now, I'm not trying to pass judgment on, on hotels or hotel owners or anything, but as Councilmember Leroy Munoz was, was highlighting, you know, there is, there is a range of, of hotels, so.
And, and I would, I would say that that's probably a, a separate meeting that we could have with the city, with the hotel operator, and let him come in and talk to, you know, members of the city staff, and gives you a chance to kind of pitch them. That's exactly the meeting I left at Morgan Hill, was with the head of economic development and the hotel operator, talking about what they would like to see ideally in the way of a hotel, and letting them kind of compare notes and figure that out, so.
All right.
Yeah, I, I'm with you.
So, let me just wrap up.